Hello, good evening. Welcome to the City of Bayonne Council Meeting of January. What is this, twentieth? Twenty? Sorry, it's been a long week already. So we'll get started now. I would just like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne of January twentieth, twenty twenty-one has been added to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted in file with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger within the required time. An additional notice of time and place of the meeting was posted in file with the city clerk and forwarded to the Jersey Journal and Star Ledger by fax on January eighth, twenty twenty-one. And notice hereby given that the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne will conduct this meeting via virtual remote communication equipment in conformance with the directives of the Executive Order of the State of New Jersey for the purpose of conducting city business. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Roll call, please, Ms. Medina.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Galais?
Here.
Mr. La Palusa?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Here. Did you call Mr. Galais?
Yeah.
Yep, she did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Hello?
I'm sorry, I don't see, I don't see, I don't see him, so. Okay.
Here.
Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic.
With its stand, one nation. Under God. Indivisible.
Liberty. Okay. First item is an ordinance adopting the amended and restated redevelopment plan for the property located in one twenty-two, one twenty-four, one twenty-six, one twenty-six and a half, one twenty-eight, one thirty, one thirty-two, one thirty-four dash one thirty-six, Avenue eight, one thirty-eight, Avenue one forty, Avenue one sixty-five, one sixty-seven, one sixty-nine, Avenue one seventy dash one eighty, Avenue. And one twenty-seven dash one sixty-three, Avenue, which is identified as blocks four sixty-seven, lot seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, block two thirty-four, lots eight point oh one, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. And block four fifty-eight, lot one, and one point oh one, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne, which was introduced to pass, passed first reading October twenty-first, twenty twenty, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. Notice that it be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at the meeting of November tenth, where it was given a second reading, at which time it was postponed to the meeting of November sixteenth. And was postponed to this meeting of January twentieth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Josh, is anybody signed up to speak?
Jake, is there any hand raised?
I don't see any hand here.
No.
Oh, Josh. Sorry.
Jake, Josh, they're all J's.
Yeah, we get it all the time at work, but no, there are no hands raised.
Okay. And no objection, no objections to statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may I have a motion to close? Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution order in final passage. Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll?
I, I have a couple of issues with this ordinance. First, I was tabled a couple of times that Sal could be present. I'm glad you're here tonight, and though I may disagree with this and that it is in the second ward, I have no doubt. Whatever position you take on it, that you have the best interest of the people of the second ward at heart. I think the councilperson of the ward knows their ward the best and wants to do what's right. However, the reason I take exception with this is I think it presents a problem to the city as a whole, and here it is. Making an exception in the zoning this tremendous brings a few issues into focus, and what I mean by tremendous is in the area, four-block radius immediately following that area, there are six buildings constructed in the, in the life of this administration, the last six years. All those buildings are below, I believe, six stories, six or below, with the exception of a housing building that was there for years that is no larger than ten. So this would represent a much larger exception. The issues I'm curious about are, just what is the criteria for this exception? What, next, what prevents the same exception from happening on any block in the city? An exception this large can occur now, if you open the gate, can occur in any block in the city. Given the size of the project, have we done an up-to-date absorption rate study detailing how many of the units built in the city are full or filling? I know that some constituents in my area and your area have that concern and are curious. And what recourse is there for the potential creating of districts within the current zoning map, given that much of our agenda is comprised of exceptions to zoning? Given that this has been tabled a few more of, you know, twice, I would be willing to table it a third time. And wait for a study to be done, an absorption rate study, before we revisit it. Can I make a motion to do that?
You can make a motion, but I, I don't, you can make a motion.
So the, the motion would be is to, uh.
Until such time is a completion.
Date uncertain until a absorption study is provided. So that's the motion. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I mean, I, I wouldn't mind seeing the absorption rate. I'll second it.
Okay, I just want to talk, I, I don't, um, I just want to talk about this because I, you know, Mr. Carroll was the one who wanted, didn't want to even wait and wanted to vote on this last month.
There's a motion on the table.
I know, and I'm going to talk on this motion.
Okay.
To table it. I, we, when we tabled it to wait for our colleague to come back from an unfortunate, he was in the middle of surgery at that last meeting. There was exceptions taken, you know, people voted for it, but they, you know, gave an exception that they were only doing it, you know, although they didn't want it because they didn't want to postpone it and let this linger on, I think, was the word, forever. But my question, my problem is, is that Mr. Carroll referred to, um, the absorption rate has nothing to do with zoning, and you keep talking about exceptions. There's no, no zoning exception was needed for this project. It falls within, there is no variance, there's no exceptions, so I'm a little confused with what the exception is.
I'm referring to its need for our approval.
All, all plans need, this is no exception to get our approval. I, you were, when you said exception, I thought you were, you know, usually that means an exonerating exception. There's no zoning exception on this at all that was necessary. So it was just straight-up plan like every other plan that we vote on, that we normally don't, I personally don't need a, a absorption study, I'm ready to vote, so that, I just wanted to clarify, I was, we just asked for clarification on what exemption, for what.
Hey, guys, I've got a couple of people entering in some questions as the conversation's going on here.
Okay, well, they have to wait. We're in the middle of a vote.
One of them is asking to vote the motion down. I just wanted that to be known.
Well, that, that's neither here nor there. Right now, there's a motion, and this is, this is the council's business at this point.
The motion is to postpone, am I right?
Motion is to table to date uncertain until a absorption. Study is provided. Uh, there's been a second. Uh, there's just, now you have discussion about it. We have Sue, I think Sue Mack is, is available if you want to ask questions to further educate. But the, after you finish discussing, the, the vote would be whether or not, uh, the, the vote, the table is, is positive or negative. So I don't know if anybody wants to hear from the planner at this point about absorption. That's, that's your choice.
I mean, I, listen, I was prepared to vote anyway, so it's not that I don't have comments or a vote to make, but I also didn't think the absorption rate, I thought that was a pretty good idea, so.
I can, I can withdraw, yeah, I can withdraw my motion to table the issue until the, the study is done, but I do want a motion to conduct the study, provided to the.
So, listen, I mean, if everybody else is willing to postpone it for the absorption rate, that's fine too. So I'm just saying, you know.
Then you, then you just put it to a vote.
Yep.
And then we may not have Sal Galais, he might be back.
All right, well, you have to wait for Ms. Medina to call for the vote. Madeline, we'll just talk for that unless, unless anyone else, councilman, has a, Juan might want, any councilman can talk on this motion before we vote on it. And the councilperson, if Sal has something to say, or Juan.
If Sal Galais might be back in the hospital, and then we got to go through this again over and over again. I think let's, let's just get it now tonight, let's get it over with, whether we vote for it or against it. So I think we should, I think it's a great building, in my opinion, but we'll keep continuing. We'll take the vote.
Yeah, listen, I, I'd been out, I know I was out, you know, I'm sorry about that. I had an accident, but I'm ready to vote on this building myself. I mean, they did traffic studies, they did, you know, I got this from our own engineer, I mean, I made sure. But I'm ready to vote, so I think it's, you know, a good idea, and I think we should just go with it.
So Madeline, can you call for the vote on the motion on the ta, the mobile, motion to postpone this?
Yes.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
No.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
No.
Ms. Nadrowski?
No.
So moving forward, um, Mr. Perez moved the resolution for final passes. Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution for passage, Mr. Carroll?
And the final thing I would bring up is that, uh, an article in the Hudson Reporter released when the master plan was done containing information, uh, can, a study that was done of the constituents at the time, asking about the height of buildings they wanted. There was a question specifically geared towards Avenue E, what types of building heights would you prefer to see along Avenue E? And, uh, when it came to ten plus, only twelve percent voted in favor of that, so this would be against eighty-eight percent of the population that was polled. In, in the study that determines whether or not they want a building that height, so I vote no.
Mr. Galais?
You're on mute, Sal.
I'm sorry.
Sal.
So all the studies that I looked at, I talked to the engineer. I mean, I think it's a great idea. They did traffic studies, they did everything. I'm voting yes for it.
Mr. La Palusa?
Again, I, I look at the building, and I'm, I'm sure what I'm going to say is not a surprise because I kind of said my piece a couple of months ago, before it was postponed, but I don't like the height, I don't like eighteen stories, I think it's way above anything we've ever done. It changes the neighborhood drastically to have this type of building there. There's more things involved than, than we've even talked about. And I'm glad Neil brought up the fact of the master plan poll, and I believe over five stories, I think was only twenty-two percent or something like that. So, um, when you look at this, you know, the majority of the people didn't want a building like this according to the master plan. There's wind shift changes when you have a building this high, so it will affect more than just the area immediately around it, and so, in, in that matter, I'm going to vote no.
Mr. Perez?
Well, I'm for any, uh, anything that have, help people get to work, especially when right now we're in economic, the economic is very fragile. I, I would consider this a good building. It would produce good construction jobs for Bayonne residents, and some are good union jobs, and right now, economy is bad. It is, it'll be a focal point for the Avenue E corridor, the Pratt Plaza, the Park Plaza. People would be sitting there, maybe having a cup of coffee, and utilizing the light rail. Like, you know, you have commercials there, you have restaurants, you're going to have retail sales there. Overall, I, I, this project will allow a beautiful new building that will give back to the community. And you have to realize that these people will spend their money, increase the tax rateable, it will attract new residents, and which will support the local businesses on Broadway. And that's one of the things that now, and you have to realize where the building, this building, it's a railroad track. It's an ugly area where there's a railroad track. I, I, myself, the community will, you're going to have open space there, more than parking, a lot of parking there, jobs, so I'm completely in favor of this, this, uh, project.
Ms. Nadrowski?
I, I just want to say, to go back to the master plan, um, our city planner and the planning board found that this building does conform with our master plan. That's how it got here, um, so, um, and then also, I agree with Councilman Perez that, you know, although this is a building that we haven't had this height, and it is, you know, larger than we're used to in town. Almost most of the buildings that this administration has done was always pushing the limits a little and something new, and, you know, people always kind of hesitate when something new and they're not used to, but I think it's a perfect location. It's a, it's a parking lot that is overlaying. It backs up to a railroad track that'll never be nothing but railroad track. Um, it gives a much, uh, rebirth to the neighborhood that, you know, is kind of a little desolate and, and doesn't have, you know, underutilized, I'll say. And it's the prime location for being on the light rail carter to do this type of development, and I think it's good for Bayonne, and so I vote aye.
Ordinance passed. Oh, two is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of a portion of Road D, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held December sixteenth, twenty twenty, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of January twentieth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. Councilman La Palusa moved a resolution ordinance to begin the second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second meeting is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, authorizing the vacation of a portion of Road D. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Josh, any hands?
The only hands I have up, um, are, it's Peter Franco and John Coop, they, uh, wanted to speak about the vote that just went on. I, Sharon, I just sent you a message.
Oh, okay. I want to see it. Okay. Oh, okay. Um, Mr. Coffee, is it proper to let them go back? They wanted to speak on the last, uh, item.
Well, we closed, we closed the public session. You've got it within your purview to.
Oh, we missed it, but, I mean, it, we're doing virtual, a hand was missed. So I'm going to let them get on the record, um, so, um, Mr. Franco, uh, you can unmute Mr. Franco, please, we'll let him get on the record as to, uh, uh, his statement.
Understood. Peter, I am unmeeting you now.
Yeah, good evening, council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Sorry about the mix-up, Peter.
No, it's okay. I'm on the road, so if you hear a little wind, that's kind of what it is. Um, I just wanted to, uh, let me pull up my notes here. There were a couple of things that were stated. I just didn't understand, uh, Councilman Carroll's apprehension with this project because the city already approved a twenty-four-story, uh, project on North Street years ago, so the precedent was already set. And then after the approval of twenty thousand new units over seven years, I don't understand, like, it's, it's, I guess it's better late than never with the absorption study, and Mr. La Palusa says he wants, you know, uh, he has an issue with the height. But he was on the planning board that approved the twenty-four-story unit on North Street, so I just kind of wanted to get that on the record, you know, because I just find it kind of funny that you could vote for something in, you know, in first ward, but then be against it, you know what I mean, in, in the second ward, only a couple of years later.
Mr. Franco, I, I would say, um, I was not present for the twenty-two-story building. That's, that's my justification for that. You're asking for clarification. That's the clarification for that. My apprehension exists in both regards, eighteen and twenty-two. And I believe, as I said when I, when I was speaking on it, uh, this is the, this is the gate opener. You, you opened the door now. Thirty-second, Garrettson, twenty foot, you know, it's, this is.
Well, you, well, but, I mean, this is what I don't understand. I mean, we're talking Avenue E here, right? Nowhere near downtown, nowhere near Garrettson, anything like that. Um, you know, if you're concerned about the first ward, you know, you should have been in protest of, of the, the property down on the old IGA. I mean, I'm, I'm glad that you're, you know, kind of standing up and, you know, protecting, uh, you know, uh, this now, but it's just, you know, it's kind of like you're taking a stand, like way late in the game here. The precedence was already set.
I have the floor now to take the stand, and so I'm doing it.
Okay.
So I'll address, uh, I'll address what you had talked about with me. Um, when I looked around at that property, completely surrounding it is open area and commercial land, not bothering any homes, no houses. It was pointed out at the meeting. There were some complaints from some people who lived like kind of a couple of blocks away, but if you look, it's not anywhere close to where that building was going to be. And so even with the wind that we talked, that, that was my point, one of the points I brought up, that that had so much open land around it, that I don't believe that that's even close to changing that neighborhood. The way that this building will change Avenue E.
Thank you for your time.
Anything further? Okay, we, I also have, um, John Coop, who would like to speak, who we missed. Mr. Coop, Jake, you can, Josh, you can unmute Mr. Coop.
He is unmuted, at least on my side. There you go.
Am I unmuted? Good evening, council.
Yes, we can hear you.
You can hear me.
Yes.
I normally don't agree with Peter Franco and everything that he says, but I think he was on point, uh, when, when he spoke about the two council people, and, and I have no personal grievances against these two council people. But he's right. There was the twenty-four building, twenty-four unit building approved. I normally don't agree with Peter Franco, but what he said, I agree with what he said, and that's on, what's on the record. And I, and, and very good that you guys approved that new building. It's going to be a beautiful centerpiece for the City of Bayonne. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so nothing further. Um, Madeline, you can move on to the next, um, we're on the paper street.
On vacation of everything.
Move it.
There is a, okay, it's a person who had, there was a hand raised, they just hit, they put the hand down, and they raised it again. Um.
Okay, so I'll just explain what this is before you even, so this is just the evacuation of a paper street, an old paper street that existed prior to the plan. This needs to be removed for the construction of the warehouse on, on the Lincoln Equities Project, so just, just giving that clarification.
Yeah, it looks like the hand that was raised was, uh, put down, but I am paying attention, so if we see any others, I will, you know, when the time is right.
Okay, thank you.
So no protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Don't move.
Second.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution order in final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Three is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for the property located at twenty-one, nineteen, West Forty-six, seventeen, West Forty-six, twelve, West Forty-seven, fourteen, West Forty-seven, sixteen, West Forty-seven, twenty, West Forty-seven, twenty-two, West Forty-seven, and twenty-two, West Forty-seventh Street, which is identified as block seventy-seven, lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne. Which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held December sixteenth, twenty twenty, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered following public, following, final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of January twentieth, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And Councilmember Perez moved the resolution, given an ordinance second. Will Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And second meeting is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for the property located twenty-one, nineteen, seventeen, West Forty-six, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, twenty, twenty-two, and twenty-four, West Forty-seven, which is identified as block seventy-seven, lots thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, and thirty-two, as shown on the official tax map of the City of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
Madeline, you have to read something into the record for this, right? You want to read that first, or?
Sure. It's from Craig Leavitch, Leva, Leva, I'm saying it wrong, and I apologize for that, uh, thirty-six, West Forty-seventh Street. He writes, "I am writing on the matter of the proposed eight-story development on West Forty-sixth Street and Forty-seventh Street. Back in the summer of twenty fifteen, I eagerly watched the city council meetings on the ten-story development that now occupies the former site of Resnick Hardwood Store. Numerous residents of the neighborhood voiced their valid concerns about the height of the structure and the sufficiency of the infrastructure and the disruption that would be caused by the construction of such a large building. Even former Mayor Richard Bukowski raised valid objections, all to no avail. The development plan was approved unanimously. The current Bay One building commenced construction in twenty seventeen, was slated to open fall of twenty eighteen, according to Jersey Dids. Instead, the construction dragged on for three years. Three long years of dirt, noise, street closures, parking disruption, and pollution from the steady parade of dump trucks, cement, cement mixers, and other heavy construction equipment. Some days, four to five cement mixers were lined up at any given moment, idling for long periods of time, spewing diesel fuel in the air. There are mainly many elderly residents with health problems in this neighborhood, as well as many young children. Exposing these vulnerable people to the steady diet of diesel fuels is incomprehensible. I have included photos of the typical day of dump trucks idling on West Forty-seventh Street. The City of Bayonne's master plan provides for four to ten-story buildings along Broadway corridor. It is my understanding that the master plan was designed to prevent these large buildings from approaching on the neighborhoods of smaller homes. With an eight-story building, while an eight-story building may be appropriate for major avenues like Broadway, such buildings do not belong in the middle of a side street populated with one- and two-family homes. After enduring the nightmare of disconstruction for three years, the residents of this neighborhood should not have to endure it again for another building that is completely out of scale with the existing homes in the area. A smaller building of no more than four to five stories, or even townhouses, would be more appropriate and preserve the character of the neighborhood, allowing the tall buildings, allowing a tall building like this on a side street will set a precedent and encourage other developers to propose such projects on other side streets. Thank you for your consideration." And are there any more speakers on this? Josh?
I've got nothing.
With that, I will take a motion to close.
So move, second.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And motion, resolution ordering final passage.
Don't move.
Second.
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 On the motion for final passage, Mr. Carroll.
No.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Again, I think the letter that Mr. Likeb, I think he said a, a lot of important things there about the nature of this same builder and what he's going to do in this neighborhood. And I would hope that if this does pass, that he takes heed and notice about the diesel trucks idling. I had to go on 4th of July and have a, an argument after I got five phone calls from them pounding and building. So I would hope that this developer would take heed to all these things if this does pass. I personally think even six stories is too high for the side street. This is going to be 10 lots off of the corner. So it's definitely the middle of the block. You know, before I was councilman, I used to drive up 37th Street, and there would be these really nice one- and two-family homes, some of them wrap around porches. And right in the middle of the block is a brick building that just doesn't belong. And everybody who can drive past that and look at this would say the same thing, and many people have. And so I look at this and I go, this is way too high for this block. Again, it changes the integrity of the neighborhood, which is mostly one- and two-family homes. I get it, we want density on the main avenues, what was talked about with the master plan and the poll. You know, people did not want this. So we keep talking about the master plan, but the master plan is vague, and it allows for these variances and things, and that's why it does come to us. So I get it. I've been over this plan with, with several different people, and told me they tried to taper it back and do different things. And, um, again, if it's a blighted area, it doesn't mean that it wouldn't improve it if it was only four stories or five stories. It doesn't have to be seven or eight stories. So it would still improve the area. I mean, even new one- and two-family homes would improve the area. But I get it. Maybe for density, he has to build so much, but other people are finding ways to make money on a four-story or five-story building. So going up the side street, seven and eight stories, unacceptable. I vote no.
Mr. Perez.
On this issue, I agree with Mr. La Palusa on there should be some considerations for the people in the neighborhood with these trucks. I think they should speak to the builder and work out something. But overall, I think, you know, that, that project they built on 46th Street, everybody has come up to me and said it's one of the most beautiful buildings in Bayonne. They have told me their property value has gone up, and, and they said this Bayonne is going into a beautiful Renaissance time. And in it, I think if they can fix these issues with the neighbors and talk to them about this trucks at all times of the hours and work, work with them, you know, I think this will be solved. I, I'm in favor of it. I vote aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Four is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, amending a financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Plaidkill Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 18-52 East 12th Street, which is identified as block 268, lot 2, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. It was introduced the first meeting held December 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of January 20th, and is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by Mr. Carroll. Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, amending financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Plaidkill Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 18-52 East 12th Street, which property is identified as block 268, lot 2, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
I currently have no hands raised, nor any questions.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Don't move.
Second.
Second.
Motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Don't move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Um, we talked about lowering the amount of years for the financial agreements. And we had said going forward this year that we would want it to lower them down to 15 years. I realize this was introduced before the new year, so I understand that it's 20 years. But, um, this particular property has had abatements for over 40 years. And so adding this too would make it probably around 60-plus years. So sticking to what I had said I was going to do, when they become 15, I'll look at these a little more carefully, but for right now, I'm voting no.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Um, I just want to clarify, we're just changing the terms and changing, given them more time. We already, this is just an amendment to this. We already granted it, so we're just really voting on, under the abatement, they had a certain amount of time to start the rehab. And because of COVID, they had to delay it, so the change in this amendment isn't to any of the financial terms. It's just about extending the time in which they can have until get those improvements done. So I, I just wanted to clarify that for the people.
Good.
At home.
Five is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and EOM 90 Avenue Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 90-102 Avenue A, which is identified as block 467, lots 8 and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held December 16th, 2020, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of January 20th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And resolution ordering, the ordinance to be given second reading is moved by Councilmember La Palusa. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Ah, this is on the, sorry, you might be on mute.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to postpone.
Oh, no, this is not, this, no, this is a postpone, an abatement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. La Palusa.
Uh, second reading, right? I vote aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
And Mr. Ms. Nadrowski, it's going to be a long night.
Aye. Wait, what's the address of this one?
On 90-102 Avenue A.
Oh, 90. Okay, fine. Thank you. I know we have three. I just, I have a.
Okay, um, second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and EOM 90 Avenue Urban Renewal LLC for the property located in 90-102 Avenue A, which is identified as block 467, lots 8 and 9, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
I've got no questions, nor hands raised.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Motion.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
As the councilman mentioned, these are holdovers from the previous year when he referenced the resolution regarding 15-year tax payments, and I vote aye.
And Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
I, I just want to just make a comment. So we, we have, we have a new policy where we're having our, our financial advisors overlook all of our financial agreements to make sure they make sense as far as, you know, benefit to the city and what they cost and all that. And they review these, and with that, I vote aye. They, they agree that this is a good financial agreement for the city.
Now, take a resolution ordering final passage.
Moving. Second.
On the resolution for passage, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
No.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Six is an ordinance approving the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and 746 Avenue E, Bayonne Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 732-746 Avenue A, which is identified as block 393, lots 3, 4, and 5, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne, which was introduced to pass a first reading at the meeting held December 16th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of January 20th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the second reading, Mr. To move by Mr. La Palusa. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, approving a financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and 746 Avenue Bayonne Urban Renewal LLC for the property located 732-746 Avenue A, which is identified as block 393, lots 3, 4, and 5, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
I don't, I don't know if there's any hands raised, but I'd just like to talk for this for one moment, because in the review of pilots, our financial advisor had reviewed this, and they decided that this one needed to be adjusted a little bit. It's a little, it's not, it could be better for the city. So with that, I'd like to just make a slight amendment to this. And because this one was only starting at 11%, their recommendation was to fall in line with the first one. Jay, as far as we'll do the same year structure for starting at 12% instead of 11%. So we can just make that amendment and vote on it that way. I mean, that, I mean, we'll, that's my recommendation, and that is, and I apologize to my council colleagues, but I literally got this report today. So that's why I'm, but that's why I'm letting you know before we start anything, they, this was the only one they had a recommendation on. So.
The mo, the motion would be to amend the financial agreement to reflect an increase in the initial percentage to 12.
Yes, from 11 to 12%. It would bring it in line with more with what is acceptable and what the city's portion should be versus what the developers rate a return should be. So that's, I like to make.
Need a second on that motion?
Second. The motion is for increasing from 11 to 12%. And then we're going to do another vote on the whole abatement, or is this just the final vote?
No, this would be to amend, and then you're going to have a, a vote on the, on the amended financial agreement.
So on the amendment to reflect the change, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
I'll take a motion to close the hearing.
Motion. Don't move.
Motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
So move, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
La Palusa.
No.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Aye.
Oh, seven is an ordinance cementing the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Parkview Realty Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 101 East 23rd Street, which is identified as block 445, lot 1.01, as shown on the official, official tax map of the city of Bayonne. This is to create the, correct the annual service charge schedule.
So could you explain to the public what that change was? Sorry, Madeline.
I don't know.
No, I'm sorry.
Schedule. Oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Sharon.
On oh seven?
Yes.
They need to fix the schedule to comply with the regulations found. They found an issue on the review. It does not affect the overall terms and does not extend anything. It's just a schedule.
So it's the payment schedule you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
But yeah, it doesn't affect the terms. Terms are not affected nor the duration.
Okay.
Doesn't extend anything.
Sorry about that. That's one I don't, I don't always read them anymore. And a resolution moved by the council president, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution for second reading, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais.
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa.
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And second reading is by title and ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson amending the financial agreement buying between the city of Bayonne and Parkview Really Realty Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at one oh, one oh one East Twenty Third Street, which is identified as block four forty five lot one point oh one as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
No questions nor hands.
No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me may have a most, motion to close.
So, move. Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Over. So, move.
Second.
That motion, uh, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Um, Madeline for oh nine, um, I'm gonna ask that we postpone this because, uh, right now, it was not signed into law, and, um, I think we should wait for that, and I think my, I think everybody's in agreement to that, but let's vote if you wanna postpone it.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. Motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
Oh, eight though.
Yes, I apologize.
No problem.
Goddamn, Gary.
Authorizing the maintenance and repair agreement with nine fifty seven Broadway Urban Renewal LLC for the installation of a sewer connector pipe, which was introduced in past first reading at a meeting held December sixteen twenty twenty was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following public hearing at this meeting of January twentieth is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordered second readings moved by Councilmember La Palusa, Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Ca- Mr. Carroll.
Aye, excuse me, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Col- Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title and ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey authorizing a maintenance and repair agreement with nine fifty seven Broadway Urban Renewal LLC for the installation of a sewer connector pipe. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
I, I just, we'll clarify anyway, just for, you know, in case anyone's wondering, this is just making the developer responsible for the pipe that was installed there. Um, in case there are any issues in the future, it makes it their responsibility for the connector. So, the, anything happens in the future, it'll, it'll be the developer's responsibility. That's the purpose of the amendment. The repair agreement.
Were there any other speakers on this?
I just have one, um, I, I'm not sure if it's a question or not, but, uh, Jeffrey King is just stating that, um, he was here to speak on, um, oh nine. I, I know you guys did.
Didn't come up yet, yeah. We're on oh eight, so you'll have to, after, uh, this one, we'll remember to come back to him.
Excellent. I'll take a motion to close.
So, move. Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
So, move.
A bit, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Oh, nine is an ordinance of the city of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter thirty five zoning regulations and chapter four licensing registration and business regulations, which was introduced to pass a first reading at the meeting held December sixteenth twenty twenty was pub- in, published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law with notice that it would be further considered file for final passage following the public hearing at this meeting of January twentieth twenty twenty one is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. This, still, La Palusa, do you want a motion to, um, postpone before the second reading?
Uh, I do, I know they just mentioned somebody was gonna, wanted to speak, so I don't know if you wanna let them speak first? We're only speaking connected with the passage of the ordinance, uh, that's. I mean, I only feel that, I, I don't know why this is being stalled. Uh, we're not approving or disproving the law that was already, um, voted on. It's the establishing of the licenses, but I don't know what, why it's being stalled or what may come when it's signed in. So, I don't wanna vote on something when I don't, when it's, it's not a complete law yet. So, that's the reason why I am asking for a postponement, and I'd like to hear what, what all you have to say.
I would second that.
I, okay. Okay, if everybody's in agreement, then I'll make the motion to postpone.
Another second.
And on the motion to postpone, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
How are we gonna handle Mr. King?
Well, Mr. King, we could just let you know that, um, there's no public, we're not, uh, voting on this now, so, um, there is no public comment on it. When it comes back up, uh, we're carrying it to next month or further, we're gonna try, we're waiting, um, Mr. La Palusa's requests is to wait until they're actually, uh, the New Jersey passes the actual law.
On oh ten is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter seven, traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at a meeting held December sixteenth, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin boards required by law with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following public hearing at this meeting of January twentieth is now before the council consideration and a public hearing. It is deleting one. Um, resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa giving you a second reading. Ms. Nadrowski, give me a second.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Second reading is by title and ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the city of Bayonne, chapter seven, traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
We got one hand raised. It's, um, Edward Grimes.
Okay, Mr. Grimes, you wanna talk about this restrictive parking? You can unmute him.
I, there he is. I meant to talk on the cannabis issue, I had my hand up for that, and I didn't.
Uh, we postponed it, um, we postponed it, so we don't take public speaking on it, we, we don't speak in, uh, on it until we're going to vote on it, we're not considering it tonight, we're waiting, um, because New Jersey hasn't finalized, hasn't really passed the law yet. I mean, I know it, or passed public referendum, but there is no law, so we don't want to regulate something that isn't actually been signed into law yet.
Right, sorry, I left my hand up, sorry about that.
No, no problem, that's fine.
So, it's no protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me may have a motion to close.
Move.
Thank you.
And on the motion to close, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And motion to close, uh, motion for final passage.
Over.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Now, it is, are there any speakers to speak?
Uh, before we, um, I actually have, is Mr. Cotter, were you able to, Director Cotter? Oh, I have a Director Cotter who'll have to come off of the mute, um, on, and he just, um, I have asked him to speak, uh, about, um, our new garbage. Um, it is an emergency contract we're operating under right now for garbage and recycling, and there will be, uh, a, it'd be awarded again permanently, it's, so it's, we're working under an emergency contract, but just to clarify some issues, we get a lot of calls on it, and, um, about the states and how garbage should be put out and what's acceptable. So, I asked Mr. Cotter to come on and just give us, uh, a brief overview of, um, what the public needs to know. Thank you, Tommy.
Oh, yeah, no, Sharon, I got on, I signed in from home.
Okay.
All right, can everybody hear me, I guess? Fine?
Yes.
All right, good. Uh, uh, let me start off, I just wanna thank everybody for the last two weeks, uh, the residents for their patience and understanding. Anytime we switch haulers, they have to learn the new route, um, garbage gets missed, recycles get mixed, and, um, you know, it's rough, you know, and, and we took a lot of calls, but we got through it. Today, uh, we did our recycling, and it seemed to go very well, the garbage also went well. We got, uh, lower amount of calls as far as what was missed, so, it looks like everything's improving, and, you know, we got over the hump, so everything should be going well. So, thank you, everyone, for your patience, we really appreciate that. Um, one thing I wanna talk about is the new zones for garbage. As you know, now, before garbage was being picked up, uh, twice a week, and the whole town was being picked up. We found it to be, uh, a little cumbersome for the city to, you know, monitor the garbage being picked up every day, uh, uh, at that time. So, we went to zones, and by going to zones, it's a smaller area for us to make sure the garbage gets picked up, and it's also keeping the trucks off the street. Uh, the, the drivers now are finishing their routes in probably about six hours, where before, we were out on the streets sometimes twelve hours, and we don't want garbage on our streets for twelve hours. The goal was to put the garbage out at night, have it picked up first thing in the morning, and we don't, ne- never have to see a garbage truck. Sweeper comes by and cleans up the rest of the mess, and that's the goal we're going for, so that's what we're trying to do. So, like I said, thank you for your understanding. So, for the zones, we have zone one is first to Sixteenth Street, and that includes Trembley Court and Country Village Court. Zone two would be from Sixteenth Street to Thirtieth Street, that includes Prospect Avenue up to Thirty Second Street, Avenue F and Harbor Point. Wednesdays and Saturdays is for zone three, and that's, uh, regular garbage from Thirty Street to Sixty Third Street. Recycling pickups haven't changed in town, they're still the same, but some of you may notice that you're putting your recycling out the same night as you put your garbage out. That's not a problem, the trucks will be by, they will pick it up. What we do ask is that you put your recyclables out in a ni- nice clean fashion. One of the changes that we, uh, have agreed to with the recycling company that takes our cans and bottles, is he now will take recycle bags. You can put your recyclables in the blue recycle bags or clear recyclable bags. This way, on windy nights, we're not worried about our cans blowing over and all your recyclables blowing into your neighbor's driveway, and then in the morning, you're picking them up, or he's giving you, you know, the evil eye because all your recyclables are in his driveway. So, that's gonna help us out immensely as far as keeping the city clean, and that's one of our goals is to keep the city clean. Uh, the, the recycle bags, you can pick them up anywhere, you can buy them online, um, your local stores will sell them, uh, can't say name brands, but they're not wimpy, 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 they offer them, um, so, you'll be able to find them anywhere if you wanna put your stuff in recycle bags. If you still want to put them in cans, we ask you to put a top on them. Uh, if you need the stickers for your cans, City Hall gives them out, you can call eight five eight six oh nine nine, talk to Mike and get a sticker, um, he'll bring them up to the front for you since City Hall is closed. Uh, we may just put some up front, you can just come by and pick them up, that's probably a lot easier to do that. Um, what else do I have here? Uh, we ask that you put your garbage out at night, especially garbage. The garbage company is starting early, they're coming in at five AM, and like I said, they've done their routes between nine and eleven depending on how much garbage that they have. So, if you were used to putting your garbage out early in the morning, or the old garbage company didn't come by your block until nine o'clock in the morning, now they're coming by at six and seven, so, you know, if you're putting it out at nine, you already missed the bus. So, we ask that you try to put it out the night before, and that will help us to stop the miss list. Um, we also have, um, garbage, as everyone knows, cannot be out before five PM. We're not issuing any summonses for people who are putting their garbage out, um, improperly or on the wrong days right now, that's an issue that we have, some people are still putting their garbage out on Friday. We will in most likely February, cuz we've been trying to issue warnings, and the houses that, you know, haven't figured out that garbage has changed, we've been putting flyers on their doors and their, you know, um, tagging their garbage, we're doing all we can. Um, if you see your neighbor and they're putting their garbage out on the wrong night, just go over and say, hey, neighbor, your garbage's out on the wrong night, you know, it's a good way to just talk to people. I know it's COVID, we're not supposed to get too close, but we're still neighbors and we all still have to get along with each other, um, so, let's not forget that.
No, no evil eye if, if somebody puts your garbage out the wrong place.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, come on, we're all neighbors, even if you don't like your neighbors, you have to live with them. What's that?
I said, thank you for the overview and, um, clarifications.
All right, if there's any questions or anything like that, they can call Public Works, eight five eight six one three one, eight five eight sixty seventy, any of the numbers we have there, and we can go over it. Um, cardboard, that's one thing I do want, let me emphasize cardboard. We've gotten away from putting our cardboard out properly. Um, it needs to be tied and bundled. I know that's not the case on all times, it's hard to do, I get it, but, you know, if you're getting five, ten Amazon boxes a week, oh, can't say that, whatever that company is, right? Um, a week, try to bust them all up and put them in one box, and do not take styrofoam, that goes in the regular garbage, and the little packing material that comes in, that all goes in regular garbage. Uh, styrofoam is a, a wish cycle, you know, you wish you would recycle, but you don't. Um, so, that has to go in the garbage, that gets confusing for us, and then it winds up all over the street. And E-way scrap metal, refrigerators and all that stuff, you still call in, and we will come by and pick it up. And pizza boxes are not recyclable, all right, they go out with regular garbage. Uh, I guess they say that the oil in the boxes makes them non-recyclable, so we don't recycle them at our plant, so just throw those in the garbage. All other boxes are recyclable. And I think that's it, I mean, I could go on all night, I could talk trash all night on you guys.
No, I know, thank you, your time limit's up, Mr. Cotter, we have a five minute timer, no, thank you for that.
Mattresses must be wrapped, mattresses must be wrapped in plastic. Box springs do not, but if you're putting your mattress out and you don't want it laying on the street, please wrap it, okay? We will pick them up unwrapped for the next week or so, but after that, they must be wrapped. All right, thank you.
And thank you, and Mr. Cotter is getting some brochures to be sent out to remind people just of all these rules and everything. So thank you, Mr. Cotter, and like I said, if anyone has questions, please call the DPW department. Thank you.
We have the new flyers with all the do's and don'ts, all right?
Okay, all right, do we have any hands raised, Josh?
Yeah, we have a couple of hand raised and we have a question. I want to go ahead just, because I don't know if this is a legitimate, like, question or not. It's just that Hugh Giordano is asking, in general comment, can we still speak on the issue of cannabis to put some suggestions on record?
Sure, yeah, it's general comment, yes.
Okay, would you like me to go ahead and unmute him in that case?
Yes, sure.
All right, you are unmuted our side, you just need to unmute yourself.
Yes, hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you so much. First off, I want to say that I deal with many councils and this is probably one of the nicest councils that I've seen in a while. You definitely handle the public very well, so I wanted to say thank you for setting this up. So my name is Hugh Giordano and I'm a union representative for the United Food and Commercial Workers Union. We represent cannabis workers. And I know that you are not voting on '09 tonight or not discussing that. But since it was on the agenda, I'm sure that you're having conversations about the future of Bayonne and what the industry should look like in the future. And I just wanted to make sure that we put it on record that we believe that workers' rights is part of the conversation, that must be part of Bayonne's conversation. Specifically, making sure that they have good practices in the past. This is a great way for economic stimulation, specifically not only because of the jobs, but because of the clientele that you will attract. Cannabis consumers and patients are the working class, but cannabis is an expensive product. And it will still be expensive even with the expansion. So we believe it will boost the local economy and help the working class. And just wanted to say that we will be here to support you in this. And if you need any help in any way as far as labor standards, we are working directly with the AFL-CIO. We are the official labor union of cannabis workers, both medical and adult use. We represent multi-state employers and also micro employers around the country and Canada. So, we're, just wanted to put on record that we hope that workers' rights is part of your future thoughts. And if you need some help in that for the future, please reach out to me. And thank you for your leadership, thank you for wanting to create good jobs, thank you for even thinking about it, even though it's postponed tonight. As a union representative, it's so nice to see a council and a mayor that really appreciates the good job that are going to come through it. So I just wanted to say thank you very much from the UFCW. And we also represent Garden State Dispensary, so if you want a tour of that dispensary, we represent those workers there. We just organized Verano, New Jersey as well, so if you want a tour to see a dispensary from seed to sale, let me know. Want to make sure that you're educated as possible. And just happy to see a great council and thank you for considering working class people. And have a great night.
Thank you for your comments. Josh, who do we have next, whoever?
Next we have Edward Grimes, and I'm going to go ahead and unmute him.
Certainly.
Good evening, council. My name is Edward Grimes, 213 Avenue B. I was born in Bayonne Hospital. My grandfather's name was Frank Koschel, he was huge in the Democratic Party in the 60s, you could probably ask your mom and dad about Frank Koschel. And he cared a lot about Bayonne and so do I. I'm sure you've seen that pipe now, I'm trying to get wheelchair access and now we're trying to get crosswalk access. And I want to thank the DPW, I think they did a wonderful job on 22nd Street, those, the crosswalks there look amazing. They have a solar panel sign now that when people want to cross safely, they can cross. And I'm wondering how long it's going to be till 49th gets that, I know it's on the, maybe it's budgeted for that, I hope it is. The question, I have a couple of questions about the 49th Avenue C. There's one sign there, there's some confusion, does that one sign cover both crosswalks? Because I know there's confusion with pedestrians and with drivers. Does that one sign cover both crosswalks or just the one? Because what happened is somebody had just hit the sign and now that sign has moved to the other crosswalk. So, I'm just wondering which crosswalk is, or are they both covered? I mean, I mean, they're all covered by this sign, but I'm wondering maybe if we get another sign, can we have another sign there?
So that's the request for another sign, we can certainly look into that. That would be for our traffic department, and our DPW puts it out there, but traffic police department would determine that.
Okay.
But I don't see a problem for getting another sign there, I really don't.
Shouldn't be, shouldn't be a problem.
So it should not be a problem.
It would make sense and it's very unsafe and I think it would make it a lot safer to have two signs there so people are more aware. Because motorists are not aware that there's a sign there, a lot of them. So that's another thing we're working on. One question, Petretas Hot Dog is being renovated or sold. I'm trying to be proactive, is there any way that we can compel them to have wheelchair access? It's literally one step, it's literally one step to get in there. As a council, can you maybe have an ordinance where one step, one steps need to be at least wheelchair accessible? I understand two and three steps is a problem, but one step surely we can find a way to have access for one step for a wheelchair. At Petretas', the old Petretas', whatever it is now, I don't know what it's going to be now, but those are my two questions. And I want to thank you and thank the DPW for their great job and painting the crosswalks too, they look great, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes, next is Peter Franco, going to go ahead and unmute him.
Good evening, council, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, great. All right, so, all right, in December, yeah, yeah, no, I'm in the house now. All right, so in December, I looked at the Joint Insurance Fund's JIF coverage, recommendations for new claims and litigations. I noticed Matthews versus the City of Bayonne. I don't know if this is a personnel matter, you know, is that the business administrator of the city, can you answer that?
Well, first of all, I did notice you put it out there, Peter, that's how I became aware of it. So if they went to our JIF, I'm sure it was notified to the city. Madeline, did you read, it goes to the clerk's office, I believe?
Yes.
Madeline, you received notice of that claim?
For who?
Matthews versus the City of Bayonne.
There is no notice of claim.
Or notice of.
There is no notice of claim. It's a pre-litigation issue and that's all we can say.
Okay, well, so if it's a pre-litigation matter, I mean, there's an intent to file. So this is public information and somebody like me who knows to look in the right place will find it. Why isn't this on the communications agenda? And it shouldn't, I mean, to me, I mean, it's a liability to the city and the taxpayer. So, you know, it's like a.
So Madeline, everything would get filed with you, correct?
Yes, and I haven't received anything on that.
And how did our JIF get notified?
It's a pre-litigation matter involving personnel issues and as such, we should not be expanding on this. At where we contacted our JIF in its capacity as our insurer. And that's the extent of what the public disclosure should be.
All right, I mean, if I can just interject, I mean, if our law department knew this about it, but this was supposed to be filed through the clerk's department and the clerk has no idea and hasn't received anything, the law director knows about this, this.
Peter, one more, there is no notice of claim. I said this is a pre-litigative matter.
Okay.
Involving personnel, so something doesn't have to go, until something goes to the clerk's office, will we notify when it goes to the clerk's office? However, there are issues attended to this, personnel matters don't always go to the clerk's office. And.
All right.
Nor to the council.
As such, our JIF was notified of an issue and that's where it stands.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Anything else, Peter?
Yeah, we've got one more, Jeffrey King wants to speak. And he just needs to unmute himself and he'll be good to go.
Mr. King, are you there?
It looks like, oh, he's still there, yeah, he's still self-muted, it looked like he dropped off for a second.
Hello? Hello?
Go ahead.
Yes, we can hear you, Mr. King.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to thank you for delaying the vote on the cannabis ordinance. I appreciate that you want to take the time to get it right and to get it to be the best for the residents. I think that's smart, I advocate for patient access so that they have quality medicine available at an affordable price. And whatever you can do to help steer that. And I agree with Mr. Giordano, definitely want to help make it friendly for workers and that's better for the community in general. So I appreciate you guys looking out for the consumers and the workers and the patients. Good on you for that. I'll be watching to see and hopefully we can really succeed with this, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, and everyone.
On, oh, 11 is an ordinance adopting the redevelopment plan for the property located at 1099-1105 MC and 66-68 West 54th Street, which is identified as Block 34, lots 26, 27, 28, 29, and 30, as shown on the official tax map of the city of Bayonne. And the resolution Wednesday, February 17, 2021, and the Dartmouth E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. Would like to move it.
Move it.
Madeline, I'd like to postpone this, I'd like to postpone this until I, you know, I get, I need to have. What I like to talk to planning issues in the commercial space.
So you don't want to introduce?
A question about the commercial?
Yeah.
Okay.
We won't introduce it and we'll hold it off.
Do we have to vote on that or? Okay, no, okay.
We draw it for now. Okay, oh, 12 is an ordinance amending the general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 33, Planning and Development Regulations. It's zoning permits and the submission of the application for zoning regulations. And amending, it actually amends Chapter 35 and Chapter 33. And this is pertaining to the cannabis applications. And it's a resolution fixing Wednesday, February 17, 2021, in the Dartmouth E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for public hearing and final passage. Would like to move it.
Move it, sec, move it.
So it's okay to do this even though we're not doing the other one?
Oh.
Well, this, setting the applications and all of that, how to submit the application.
And you can do the same.
Doesn't make sense.
You can do the same thing, Gary, we can introduce it and then carry it and carry it and carry it until the.
Well, why don't we just do them together?
We can.
Doesn't make sense.
Yeah, I thought so too, I mean. You've already got the other one introduced, the, essentially the correlative one. So. So we introduce this and just postpone it until we find that it's.
Oh, okay.
All right, so, okay, that's fine, then we'll do that, then.
Do your second introduction?
So, was there a motion made already? Right?
Yes.
I'll second it, that's fine.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And then we'll make the motion to postpone this to go along with the other one, because it makes sense.
Well, 13 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 16, rent control. And the resolution fixing Wednesday, February 17, and the Dartmouth E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. It is extending rent control through December 31, 2021.
Move it.
Move it, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
14 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 7, traffic. And the resolution fixing Wednesday, February 17, at 7:00 PM, in the Dartmouth E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. This is parking prohibited on certain streets, which is West 7th Street on the north side.
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Communication is a hall ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C-1 through C-65. Are there any questions on the communications?
Any hands raised?
No.
On that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye. I'd like to just make a motion, we're going to take a 10-minute break. Mr. Galais has to take care of a change of his medicine, his IV right now. So, we're going to take a 10-minute break, motion for a minute recess. So we'll.
And on that, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye, and thank you, Sean.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And caution everybody to turn your cameras off and mute your microphones.
And we'll reconvene at 8:43, okay? Okay, the council's all back. So moved?
Second.
Motion to reconvene, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
Mr. La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
And Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
And we're back to officers' reports, which is a resolution ordering OR 1 to be received and filed and any resolution to be incorporated within that be adopted. Any questions on the claims list? What we have now.
Yeah.
And on claims list, Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Galais?
Aye.
La Palusa?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Nadrowski?
Aye.
Consent resolutions, it is a resolution moved by the council as a whole ordering the resolutions incorporated within it to be adopted. I am removing C R sixteen, C R twenty, C R twenty-two, twenty-five, and twenty-seven. Any questions on the remaining consented resolutions?
I, I've got nothing on my side.
And on the consent resolutions, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R one is a resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa, authorizing the mayor and city clerk into an agreement with Clark King Hints P C for professional planning services as counsel of the affordable, unaffordable housing consultant for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on R one?
Nothing.
And so on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
Two is a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter an agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for Services as the environmental consultant for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed seventeen thousand five hundred. Uh, Mr. La Palusa, will you second?
Second.
Any questions on that one?
Got nothing.
Hey, on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R three is authorizing the execution of an agreement with N W Financial Group L L C to provide financial advisory services for a period commencing January first and ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one.
Somebody's giving some feedback.
Somebody's phone is ringing. Moved by the council president, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R four is executing an agreement with Anthony R. Suarez Esquire for professional legal services to act as the rent control board attorney for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars. And it's moved by Councilmember Perez. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R five is authorizing the agreement with Jason Lambrello Malone and Puzo for professional legal services to act as the municipal tax attorney for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars. And it's moved by the council president. Mr. Galais, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R six is authorizing an agreement with Archer Attorney at Law for professional legal services as bond counsel for a period commencing January one through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, and no certain amount on that one. It's moved by Councilmember La Palusa. Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R seven, what is authorizing an agreement with C M E Associates for professional engineering services as in-house engineers for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Resolution smoked by Mr. Perez, who'd like to second.
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 Any questions on R seven or anything before? And on the resolution, on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R eight has been removed. R nine is authorizing an agreement with McCabe Environmental Services L L C for professional services as certified lead-based paint inspector for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one. I don't have that resolution. It's a resolution moved by Councilmember La Palusa. And Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R ten is moved by Councilmember Perez, authorizing the entry into an agreement with Matrix New World Engineer, Engineering for Licensed Site Remediation Services for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Ms. Nadrowski, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R eleven is authorizing an agreement with Runeman and Roth L L C for professional legal services as labor attorneys for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
Will you move? No, I need, I need you to move it.
I'll move it.
And the second?
Second.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R twelve is authorizing an agreement with Hughes Infinity P C for professional legal services to act as municipal court public defender for the period commencing January first through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one, for the amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars and entering to an agreement with Shaki Al-Said Esquire and Thomas Cole Esquire for professional legal service to act as alternate public defenders for a period of one year commencing January first for a total contract amount not to exceed seven thousand five hundred dollars each, with said funds being deducted from the seventy thousand dollars allocated to Hughes Infinity. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Move it.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R twelve is authorizing an agreement with Remington Environmental Engineers for professional engineering services as special project engineer on a on-call basis for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
And second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R fourteen is authorizing an agreement with Triad Advisory Services for professional consulting search services related to the planning and implementation of the city's community development block grant program for maximum contract amount not to exceed forty-five thousand six hundred fifty dollars, six hundred fifty dollars for a period of one year commencing January first. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
And second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R fifteen is authorizing the agreement with Civil Solutions and Division of A R H Associates for professional engineering services in connection with the maintenance of the city of Bayonne's digital tax map for a period commencing, for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Move it, second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R sixteen is authorizing the agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for professional engineering services for special projects for the period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one, for an amount not to exceed four hundred thousand dollars.
Oops.
Move it.
And second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R seventeen is authorizing an agreement with Leglassino Webster, which, which Calla and Taylor L L C for professional legal services as redevelopment and land use attorney for a period of one year commencing January first and hourly rate set forth in the response to the request for qualifications and proposals, it's amount not to exceed sixty thousand dollars. Would you like to move?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R eighteen is an agreement with C M E Associates trading as consultant and municipal engineers for professional planning services to act as the city's planning consultant for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty-one. Would you like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Uh, hi, could you tell me the terms on that too?
We actually have the resolution in front of me. Hold on one second. R eighteen.
R eighteen.
I got it.
This is paid, this is paid via developers' accounts.
That's gross.
Escrow accounts.
Okay, but how is that? Do we have a way that's billed or? I was just curious.
As, as they perform work, they charge against the escrow accounts that the developers deposit with the city of Bayonne.
Okay, I voted I already.
Okay. And Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R nineteen is an agreement entering to an agreement with Clary Jacoby Alferi and Jacobs L L C for professional legal services as redevelopment and land use council for a period of one year commencing January first for an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars.
Move it.
Move, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R twenty is coming off. R twenty-one authorizes the mayor and city clerk to enter an agree, a contract with Tetherview for the provision of web hosting services for the city's various public meetings during the COVID pandemic for a period of one year commencing January first, twenty-twenty, for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carroll.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
R twenty-two has been removed. R twenty-three is re, renaming West Twenty, Twenty Street between Avenue City and Broadway, Reverend H. Jean Sykes Way.
Move it.
Move.
Um, I'd like to read it in the record, Madeline, in full. Would you like to read it or? Do you have it or you want me to read it? I just think he should be honored and be read.
Whereas Reverend H. Jean Sykes, a native of Tallahassee, Florida, and one of six children born to George and Henrietta Sykes, received his bachelor, bachelor's degree in electrical engineering and technology from Cleveland Institute, a degree in industrial education from Florida A M, A and M University, and attended the Eastman School of Marketing, Rutgers University, University School of Urban Planning, and Northeastern Bible College. And whereas in nineteen seventeen, Reverend Sykes, a veteran of the United States Air Force, began a twenty-two-year career in business. He worked for various divisions of Eastman Kodak and Singer Company, retired from business, the business world in nineteen ninety-two to devote himself to his ministry full-time. And whereas Reverend Sykes was ordained by the Shiloh Baptist Association and began his work in the seminary in nineteen seventy-seven, Reverend Sykes served as an associate minister at the Shiloh Baptist Church in Plainfield, New Jersey, and assistant to the pastor of the Concord Missionary Baptist Church in Perth Amboy, New Jersey, and Saint Luke Baptist Church in Patterson, New Jersey, before coming to Bayonne. And whereas Reverend Sykes served as pastor of Friendship Baptist Church in Bayonne from nineteen ninety-three until his death on April fourth, twenty-twenty. Under his leadership, a twenty-two thousand square foot church facility was completed in two thousand and seven. It includes a five-hundred-seat sanctuary, a daycare center, and a three-story office tower that houses ever-expanding community outreach activities. The church continues to grow in the areas of membership, spirituality, and community service. Pastor Sykes was also a fa, the founder and president of the Bayonne Community Action Project. He also served the community commissioner of the Bayonne He also served the community commissioner of the Bayonne Housing Authority. And whereas Reverend Sykes and his wife Fanny, who has passed away on April twentieth, twenty, twenty twenty, were the loving parents of Lynn, Tanya, and John Sykes. And be resolved by the municipal council as follows. The West Twentieth Street, Avenue City and Broadway shall hereby hereafter be known as Reverend H G Sykes Way.
Thank you, Madeline.
Do you move it as a whole?
As a whole.
Yes, please.
And on that resolution, Mr. Carol.
Yes.
Mr. Galais.
Yeah.
Mr. La Palusa.
I knew him very well. I did a lot of good things for the community. I just wanted to give him a proper, you know, viewing with this, and I vote I.
Mr. Perez.
I totally agree with Gary on that. He is a wonderful man. I always, always spoke. A lot of people spoke very highly of him. I vote I.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
I and be looking, there will be a ceremony. We'll be working with people from the church on the date for when we'll actually do the renaming. But I.
Comes our favorite part. The add-ons. Add one is from the Honorable J M Davis appointing and reappointing the following individuals to the planning board. Demiana Joseph, her term to expire December twenty-first, and Maria Bellato, and her terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Would you like to move it?
Some move.
Move it.
Second.
And on that commission from the mayor. Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And two is appointing, reappointing Clifford Adams and Lois Libardi to the zoning board of adjustments, both terms to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four.
Some move.
Second.
That one, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And three is appointing the Honorable Sharon A. Nadrowski as a class three member of the planning board for a term to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay. And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
I should recruit myself? No, go for myself.
You vote no, Sharon.
To get abstained if she'd like.
I love saying.
And four is approving the emergency temporary appropriation for budget, budget number one for county, the county of two thousand and twenty-one municipal budget.
Move it.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And five is approving the budgetary transfer from for calendar twenty twenty, as we read in full, of course. It's resolved that the appropriation reserve transfer as set forth below pertaining to county year twenty twenty appropriations being the same and hereby authorized and be a further resolved that the controller be and is hereby authorized and directed to make said transfers in accordance herewith. It's from the current from, current fund. It's municipal prosecutors, thirty-three thousand, tipping cost sixty-three thousand, ninety dollars, two, public works, other expenses, one thousand, fire department, other expenses, three thousand, rent control, other expenses, ninety dollars, engineering, eighty-two thousand, eighty-two thousand dollars. She's got one here for ten thousand dollars. With no title. Have to get that from her.
What was that?
No, she's got an additional ten thousand dollars, but she doesn't say where it's going to, as I'm reading her.
And that's to police O eight. She must have left it off.
What was that? Donna?
Yes.
What was that?
Police, that was to police O eight.
Okay.
The ten. She must have left it off.
Police other expense.
Other expenses, ten thousand. Okay.
I'll move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
And Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And six is authorizing an agreement between the city of Bayonne and the Hudson County Improvement Authority for solid waste disposal services.
Move it.
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
At seven is authorizing the mayor and or his designate to request accept and expend an emergency management performance grant, emergency management agency assistant subgrant awarded award for the period of one year commencing July first, two thousand and twenty through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one to the Bayonne Office of Emergency Management from the New Jersey State Police Office of Emergency Management.
Does that match on it? I have a question. Because I was told it was matching one that we get every year, but I didn't hear that in there.
No, there's no matching, no reference of a matching in this resolution.
Do we have Chief Weaver available to talk on this?
I'm sorry, counselor.
Question was.
This resolution, I was told it was the same, same grant we take every year, which has a matching on our side, but it's not in the resolution. Does this require a matching?
This, this grant does not require a matching. I believe the last two years, there was no match.
I don't think so. I thought last year had a match. Pretty sure. Okay.
Okay, well, I'll have to double check last year, but this year's has no match.
So it's just a flat ten thousand?
That's correct. Ten thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to move it?
Some move.
Is that it?
Second.
Thank you.
On the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais. Mr. Galais.
Hi.
La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And three, authorizing the city clerk to execute an amendment to the existing tax agreement with Palonto Dental LLC to amend to reflect project completion date of February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
Well, over a second, Madeline. Somebody's got it. Somebody's got to, I think you might still be on, but somebody's got to mute themselves because that sounded like a transmission from Mars.
All right, you can go now. You sound the time, Jay, so.
Okay, it was executing an amendment to the existing tax agreement with Palonto Dental LLC to reflect the project completion date of February twenty-second, two thousand and twenty.
What's happened? We have three five-year exemptions, this and the next two, Palonto and two E O M four sixty-two and five sixteen, I think, are the addresses. And due to construction issues, and then I think in one case we had an issue with COVID. The completion dates for these were December thirty-first, December thirty-first, and March thirty-first of two thousand and nineteen. The progress have been completed. It was after the date, section two oh one, and the agreement says provides for a completion date. This will allow for the, the tax assessor to put the exemption on for two thousand and twenty-one, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-one. And it acknowledges that there's a change in the completion date in the, in the agreement.
Would you like to move it?
Move it. Second.
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 And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And nine is amending the existing tax agreement with E O M four sixty-two Broadway LLC to reflect the completion date of December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Move it.
Move it.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And ten is amending the tax agreement with E O M five sixteen Broadway LLC begin to reflect the completion, project completion date of July twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
And eleven is authorizing the execution of an agreement with Integrated Microsystems, Inc. to better effectuate I T equipment, software, subscription renewals, and purchases for a maximum contract amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars for a period of one year commencing January first, two thousand and twenty-one.
Some move.
Second.
Second.
And the resolution, Mr. Carol.
Hi.
Mr. Galais.
Hi.
Mr. La Palusa.
Hi.
Mr. Perez.
Hi.
Ms. Nadrowski.
Hi.
Twelve is authorizing the mayor's city clerk to execute an agreement with Arthur R. Tybold, junior esquire from Appleseasian, McDermott, Mastro, and Murphy to represent the city of Bayonne in connection with the negotiation of labor agreements with the P P B A Local Sep, number seven, the Bayonne Police Superior Officers Association, the Bayonne Fire Department Local Eleven, and the Fire Superior Union Local Two-Eleven in the amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Some move.
Second.
I'd like to comment on this. I have a question, actually. Um, this is not fair and open. Um, is this fair and open?
It's his professionals' contract.
Um, we just sent out, today we did nineteen, last meeting we did another twenty, forty, forty professional contracts that we sent out through the R F P process. Um, I'm just a little surprised. Why is this one, you know, not go through the fair and open like all the other professional contracts we've done?
Two things. That's not fair and open. That's an R F P, R F Q process.
R F P. Well, why did we go through the R F P?
And T-Ball and his firm did reply in two thousand and nineteen for two thousand and twenty. They weren't named as labor counsel, however.
Understood, but we, we wanted to use them. We just literally in October went out for the R F P process where it comes through and it's reviewed by a four-person counsel to effectuate which is the best firm to use, right? We do a rating system. I believe you're on the committee, Jay. You're one of the raters. So we just actually, R eleven on this agreement on our agenda today was awarding labor counsel through the R F P process. If we wanted, if this company wanted to or firm someone had a pension for, because since it wasn't an R F P, that means somebody solicited them directly.
There's no doubt. So.
So.
Mayor solicited them directly.
Okay, so we're not familiar with them, so I'm a little uncomfortable with why we solicited and circumvented the, the R F P process like we did with all the other firms. We just awarded one on this. If the mayor knew we wanted it, why wouldn't we call them and tell them to smith through the regular process? I mean, wouldn't you agree best practices are, you know, established to use the R F P process? I mean, is that not best practice?
Yes, but there are exigent circumstances. There are also, there are also times when we have awarded professional contracts.
I completely under, yes, I would understand that, and I agree, and I know we have. But generally, it's usually time. Like, if this was, if this were you doing this in June, July, August, I can understand that because it doesn't conform with the regular time. But we were going out and we produced forty, fifty R F Ps, and we solicited them, and we went out through the profit process where they all come in, they're reviewed, they're rated, they're weighted, and they're awarded. I'm just, you know, for me personally, I don't know, kind of taints the process for me a little that we just did forty of them one way, and we're doing one a different way. Um, and we just awarded somebody with this for this, and now we're having second. I have no problem with a second. If, if people responded and the mayor said they needed two, we could always award two, but I'm just, it just taints it. You know, there are people asking, why, why is this one different? I've had a question asked to me. Why is this one different?
I think what's different, this is for the specific purpose of negotiating with the four unions.
The firm that we just awarded in eleven negotiated two contracts with all four unions twice during our mint free. So I'm not saying anything. I'm not, I'm not disparaging them. I'm just trying to understand why. It seems a little off. It's a little taints the process for me a little bit as to why we're doing this in a way that we normally don't operate. And when it was in the timeframe where it could have just went out and they could have been awarded through the regular channels like, like Roth was and every, and all other forty-seven contracts we awarded in last month and this month.
I believe the mayor has a specific interest in hiring this specific individual, Arthur T-Ball, in connection with the negotiation of labor.
Okay, just for me, it taints the process? Kind of just, I'm sorry.
The process, the process is, you have an R F P, R F Q process, then you also have professional contracts which are exempt from bidding.
I'm just asking about this one. I'm asking about this one in particular. Do you not agree that best practices would say that we should conform to the R F P process?
You, I can't dispute that. The, the best.
Okay, that's it. That's it. I, I don't, I'm just, that was the question. I'm just asking why. You're telling me because the mayor has a personal preference here. Um, that's fine, and I'm asking, do you, the illegal opinion is whether best practice would say we should have conformed to their regular process? I mean, it was in the same timeframe, so I don't understand why we just didn't go.
There's, there's also, if you have a best practice, then you want some needs, and the mayor has determined and he feels the city will be best protected by retaining this individual and this firm in connection with these negotiations.
Okay, I just want to understand then why we have an R F P process then. Okay. I mean, the R F P process is to make sure it's fair and open and things are rated and, and there's more than one person making the selection and weighing things out. But I don't, I would just, it just, my own personal question, I'm not arguing. I'm just asking. I'm looking for clarification because I have been asked the same question by people, why this was not done through the normal process, and why do we have an R F P process if we're going to pick and choose? Um, you know, so, you know, I'm not sure. Daddy know the ma, you know, the mayor doesn't.
But you're not.
Vote on it, so.
You're not precluded from picking someone outside of the, the process. And there could, we have panel council, we have three or four people submit for.
And they, yes.
Planning, and they come in fourth, they come in third, they don't get named during the course of the year. You can reach back and say, okay, now we're going to name them. And he did submit in, in two thousand, for the two thousand.
Okay, this is two thousand and twenty-one. And he didn't, and you were already talking to him, so why didn't he just submit? If the mayor was already negotiating or, or engaging with him, why didn't he just say, hey, submit, why don't you submit for this R F P? We're posting to come in through our regular process where you're vetted like every other firm.
Well, in, indeed, in two thousand and twenty, he did submit. For two thousand and twenty. For two thousand twenty-one.
Okay, well, we're in two thousand twenty-one, that's what I'm saying.
Understood.
So I'm just, I'm just trying to understand, we have an RFP process. Why do we have an RFP process if we're going to pick and choose when we use it?
Well, no, you, you can have an RFP process, not mutually exclusive, Sharon, that there, there are two different ways to award.
I know, but I understand that, but I'm trying to understand why in this particular case, when it was coinciding, why not just go through the regular process? So, so in that, you know, I like to say, so we can hire someone, we just did an RFP, we can go back to someone who didn't apply this year, but if they applied last year, it's okay to, to award them the contract, even though they didn't apply this con, for this RFP?
That one determines that we want to hire a specific entity to represent the city of Bayonne. The proposal can be presented to the council, the council gets a vote on it, if it's the mayor's choice.
Who submitted it? Who submitted?
This is the mayor's. This is the mayor's submission to the council, looking for approval to enter into this contract and ratify and affirm actions that took place before the entry of the contract.
Okay, I'm just, for me, it sounds a little off, a little, just taints the whole process that we, we just went through for forty-five other sixty firms, for Madeline, I had to read them all out last month and this month. There are too many even to do in one month, and we're just, I'm, you know.
What I know is that the mayor has specifically identified this individual at this firm to represent the city in connection with these negotiations. If, if the council chooses to say no to that, that's the council's choice. The mayor, the mayor can't force you, can't make you, it's just proposed to the council and the council votes on it.
Did, did they already start? Is it, so this, is the negotiation already started? They already engaged on behalf of the city?
In, in fact, the, the body of the resolution talks about the fact that the mayor met with Mister T-Ball in late two thousand twenty, and.
During our RFP process.
Bayonne, I'm sorry?
During our RFP process.
And he, in turn, agreed he would represent us in connection with the negotiations of the labor agreements. And this is the resolution that, that confirms that.
Okay, so we sort him out. I, I mean, we've never had experience with them. So I'm just, you know, the city, I don't think he's ever worked with the city. So, did we pay them already? Have they received compensation for their services?
Five hundred and sixteen dollars and fifty cents was paid on December sixteen, two thousand twenty, through the approved bill list. This resolution.
Yeah, they amended, on the amended, on the amendments, if I recall now.
I, I just know it was paid on December sixteen, two thousand twenty.
Okay, so we already paid them, we already engaged, and now it's before us coming through.
The mayor to retain this individual and to authorize the contract.
Okay, I'm just looking for clarification. Like I said, it just didn't follow our normal process. It's a little outside, a little off for me.
Okay. So we need a motion?
Or any other things before, we already got the motion and all of that.
What are we doing? So there's a motion already made?
It's already made, I'm taking a vote, just making sure there's no other. So on the resolution, Mister Carol.
Aye.
Mister Galais.
Aye.
Mister La Palusa.
Aye.
Mister Perez.
Aye.
Miss Nadrowski.
I'm sorry, just seems a little off, a little tainted to me, this, the process, so I'm going to vote no.
On the last item, is authorizing a closed session, which pursuant to NJSA.
Oh wait, I'm sorry, I have one more, I have one more, sorry. I have, sorry, I know it's unusual. I would like to, and Mister Coffee, you could tell me, I don't know if I can just extend this contract or if we need to go out to bid, but I'd like to extend the contract that we have, the agreement we have with Rayon, Rayon, Coughlin, and Mancello, that, from Island for professional legal services related to the existed utility and management agreement for the city's water and sewer system. I'd like to extend it through the, the end of, now through the end of December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. This, we had this, it expired on December thirty-first. Since there's no one still working in City Hall, who's from this original deal that we have, this water deal that was signed, there's nobody here who was part of the team that originally signed this agreement, and quite honestly, I don't think anyone here can speak to what's really in this agreement. And with the long-term control plan coming up, and we all know what, what a major project that's going to be, I want to make sure that the city, you know, our obligations are covered. So this firm, I would recommend that we extend their contract to, so they can do, because I don't believe they ever did any work last year, even though we did approve this, to do a deep dive into our contract with the water utility. You know, like again, like I said, it's very concerning with the long-term control. We want to make sure all our obligations are met.
What, do you have terms, Sharon?
Yeah, last year's, it was extended last year's was not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, and it was from February, it's almost a year ago that. And I don't believe they build down, because although we did appoint them in February, they weren't notified till August from the administration, no one contacted them, they didn't even know they were awarded. And as my understanding that no work was done, and I know Gary, me and you have talked about this in the past, that we have concerned about the water contract and how, who's doing what, and how the money's being spent, and, you know, everything that's being covered, and I just think we should continue. We agreed last year that we should do this, but nothing got done, and I want to extend it, especially given with the long-term control project coming up. Jay, do we have to, can we extend it, or would, should we go out, you know, through a process?
You can make an award to Rayon, Coughlin, and Mancello in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, covering the period January first, two thousand twenty-one to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Upon the hourly terms as.
Extending the same contract.
Yeah.
I mean, we could do an RFP, I don't have a problem with that.
But I, I think there's a specialized interest here. David Mancello's already provided a preliminary analysis. That was back in November, so they did work on it in November. I'm looking at the email, so there was work done in November of two thousand twenty, and then there were conversations back and forth after that. But it, it would serve the city well if we extended this for another year. We need the contract for another year.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Sharon made the motion, and Neil seconded.
And on that resolution, Mister Carol.
Aye.
Mister Galais.
Aye.
Mister La Palusa.
I think it's a, Sharon, it's a real good thing to have another set of eyes looking at this with a little more expertise. Who would I?
Mister Perez.
Aye.
And Miss Nadrowski.
Aye.
As we're going to be adjourning to a closed session, and the resolution is pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve A. The city of Bayonne Municipal Council must conduct its meeting at all times, subject to the provision of NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, and whereas pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash twelve B, section seven, the city of Bayonne Municipal Council makes school the public from the portion of the meeting wherein the city of Bayonne Municipal Council discusses any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. And whereas, council makes school the public from the portion of the meeting wherein the city of Bayonne Municipal Council desires any matter that could adversely affect the public interest in discussion as such matters, if such matters was disclosed, is now necessary to review certain options and legal implications and ramifications thereof for the purpose of discussing land acquisitions between the city of Bayonne and property owner regarding the city's potential purchase, wherein the city, within the city of Bayonne for public purposes. The city of Bayonne legal and negotiation positions, the city of Bayonne's legal and negotiating positions might be compromised by public discussion of the same at the current time. City of Bayonne now deemed it necessary to convene to a closed session in order to discuss the, discuss the forth said matters and legal and financial ramifications. Whereas is the intention of the city of Bayonne Municipal Council to keep reasonable comprehensive minutes of the closed session meeting pursuant to NJSA ten colon four dash fourteen, and to make said minutes available to the general public after the finalization of the issue involved, now being resolved that the city of Bayonne Municipal Council shall recess to a private session in order to discuss the matter set forth above. And be further, the city of Bayonne Municipal Council shall, won't convene at the conclusion of this private session, but no further action will be taken on this matter. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mister Carol.
Aye.
Mister Galais.
Aye.
Mister La Palusa.
Aye.
Mister Perez.
Aye.
And Miss Nadrowski.
Aye.